We'll start with the pledge legions.
Pledge legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have the approval of minutes from the August 22 meeting. Do I have a motion to approve them?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And approval of CSE CPSC recommendations. Marilyn, did you want to hold that and ask questions or is that something that you want to do in the future?
I'll do that in the future.
Okay.
I'll read it more thoroughly.
Alright, so if nobody has any questions or comments, we can either approve them, but if you do, we need to pull it and go into executive. I have a motion to approve as submitted.
I'll make it.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Lost my train of thought there. I gotta stop taking the minutes here. Okay, public comment. I don't see any students. The Board of Education welcomes and encourages input from the public at the board meetings. Please note that neither the board nor the administration may engage in dialogue or respond to questions concerning personnel or student matters. This is not to attempt to restrict public comment, but is done to protect the privacy of the individuals involved as required by law. As a matter of courtesy to others in attendance, comments or individual groups should be limited to less than three minutes. With that said, does anybody have any public comment? Do we want Molly to touch on?
If there are questions, she's here to answer.
Okay. Molly Little is here for the Boys on the Run under the consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions? She's here to discuss them. If not, we'll move on.
Go for it.
Alright, we are up to discussion items. I know we have a few that we had tabled at the August 22 for further clarification. The district-wide safety plan and the code of conduct. If those follow-up questions were satisfied, or is there further concern on those? If not, they will be brought forward to the October meeting, correct?
Correct.
And the facilities committee meeting. Kevin, would you like to report out on that?
Yes, we actually just met earlier. We received a, we met with Scott Dale, who's our school's architect firm that we're dealing with, BCA Barry Clark Associates, Bernie Clark Associates?
Bernie Clark.
Bernie Clark Associates, that's right. He gave us a report, a rundown of the buildings. The, one thing that we want to top or touch on as the facilities committee is we want to make a recommendation to the board to see if they'll take action. I'm doing a study on the floors of the Townsend School. We have, we've had some concerns about Townsend School. School come to us about the floor. We are looking to see if the board would let us have that study done. It's going to be in a neighborhood of like $90, $9,200 to $10,000. So.
With regard to the concerns about the floors, is that structural, you know, material, compositions, chemical?
Yeah, structural, structural. Over the entire report that we reviewed, we feel that the Townsend's, the floor over there is our, potentially, I guess I should say, are potentially the biggest liability we have, if anything is wrong. If, if the floor is not. We have some concerns, so I guess if the floor is not up to par, we just, we want to know about it so we can start addressing that. Obviously, we're all hoping that goes very well, but we'd rather have facts than thought.
I think the bottom line is, it's been brought to the board's attention through walkthroughs that there's structural stability, potential questions about the stability of the 1935 floor. The only way you really can answer that question is a structural analysis of the deflection, what's causing it, what do the members look like, are they sized properly? Is it okay? Is it structurally sound for staff, students to be in those areas? So, first steps, look at the structural analysis and see what it is. I believe we talked about three different approaches that come out of that. Obviously, you could replace the floor, the floor could be fine, or you could have a combination of both, which should be a Band-Aid type approach in order to shore up what's there. Without a study, an in-depth analysis of the structural members, we would have no idea what direction to go. We just know we have a potential risk.
Right.
So, we need to get to the bottom of that.
And Butch, you might remember, I believe at the last building project by the kitchen area and in the hallway, that they found structural damage to the floor there as well, if I remember right, when they were digging up the kitchen and stuff, where they had to reinforce that.
They had to reinforce inside the cafeteria part, not, I don't think it was in the hallway.
The kitchen or the cafeteria, so, okay.
But they did, they went back and I think they went through and fixed that.
One other note on that, and as a committee, we're definitely not trying to strong-arm the rest of the board, but we did, we have our next meeting already scheduled. If this is something that the board decides to do as a whole, we can probably see if we can't get them in and get it done so we can know in real near future what we're looking at.
Prior to your next committee meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
And I don't want that to be that we're assuming terrible things for the school. It's just that we're looking at future projects and we'd like to know kind of what's out there that has to be dealt with versus what we would like to deal with.
And I think the findings, it would be relevant if we brought the whole findings as presentation back to the board.
Right.
So, everybody's on the same page.
Alright, so we can do a resolution for that? Okay. Do we want to do it now or under new business? Do it now? Okay, do we have a motion to do a study on the floor at Townsend School?
I'll make that motion.
In a second? All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
So, you'll reach out to?
I'm gonna, I'll call Scott in the morning.
Okay.
He's gonna just get back to me and I'll let the board know if he can do it within that time, but he's pretty sure he could.
Okay, good. Anything else, facilities?
That was pretty much it. We just reviewed different things, but really had nothing else to report out on. That was kind of the, we thought we ought to move on.
Okay. Marilyn, would you like to share your Townsend School experience?
I would. And I wrote it down because my mind was asleep halfway through probably. On Thursday, September 2nd, I had the pleasure to be at a morning walkthrough with Mike Snyder at Townsend School. And Mike Snyder does this every day, which I'm impressed with. And the kids, you can tell that they are glad to see him when he comes in. That was nice to see. And I was impressed with how fresh and clean the building is. It looked so just cheerful. And we visited the kindergarten wing first and I was impressed with the technology they used because it's been a long time since I've been in the kindergarten wing. And, but I was glad to see that they still do the butterfly hatching. There was a lot of that going on. I was greeted with smiles from the teachers and some of them had let me know that I'd be welcome to come back anytime. And the little ones were happy to be there, all the kids. It seemed like they were all ready to settle in and learn. They were really, it was impressive. And the older ones were engaged in testing because they test this time of the year and then they compare the results to last May. And that way, they have an idea where their strong points are and where their weak points are and they can start helping from the beginning. The special ed math teacher explained how she encourages the children having problems with math by telling them, when they finally get the problem solved, see who can do this. And I wish that back when I was in school, I had a teacher that would say, see, explain it and then say, see who can do this. Because math was never mine. The teachers have, and the resources we have available for our students is awesome and I'm glad to have had this opportunity. And we're providing for the needs of all our students, which was obvious. And I have a little presentation from Mr. Snyder.
Hi. Thank you, Marilyn. We have received nominations for distinguished service award that will be discussing in the near future. And then also, I'd like to just bring back the RFP for attorney services. Has everybody had a chance to review the sample RFPs? Does anybody have any changes, any additions that they would like to bring forward?
Is there one that we're looking at? I particularly thought that the one, the sample from Bethlehem School District was a pretty good sample. There was some, there were components of both that I liked.
Right.
But, you know, so to the extent that we could integrate those, I didn't have an opportunity to type that, but.
I'd be willing, I highlighted the one, the points that I liked and put notes to them. I would be willing to give to you.
Okay.
I agree, the Bethlehem one was, was well organized. The only thing I noticed that both of them really missed was like a staffing and cost chart that you would ask for in RFQs, if you have a certain amount of personnel you expect to be utilized under this contract, you may want to list them all up front and get a, get a cost on that so you have an idea what they are, so your hourly wages are set going into it, you kind of know.
Right, for the senior staff and then the less senior.
Yeah, the legal.
And where they also, their expertise lies as well, but you're welcome to have mine in my notes. I don't know how, if you want to compile one.
Okay, so yeah, I guess if you can, if anybody has anything to add, I guess, give them to me, provide them to me, and then I will give them to Roger. The one thing that I did, I think both of them had a five-year engagement. I would like something in the middle.
I think Bethlehem said that it was to be reviewed annually, but obviously understood the value of a longer-term relationship. And I think that obviously a board can't encumber future boards with, with contracts like this, so I think that keeping it on an annual review basis, understanding that it's our desire to retain over the long term.
Okay.
Contemplated, where is it? Term of engagement. This engagement is contemplated to be subject to annual review of the Board of Education. It's recognized the longer term of service is beneficial, so that was the Bethlehem one.
And this agreement may be terminated upon the 30-day notice. Okay. Alright, so yeah, if you want to get those to me and then I will share them with Roger and then we can compile something and get that out as soon as possible. Alrighty. I believe that's all I had under discussion items. Did anybody else have anything that they wanted to add? Alright, we will move on to correspondence. Workers' compensation self-insurance alliance meeting Friday, September 29th. Butch, you normally attend that, will you be available? Does anybody want to attend that with Butch? Don't all raise your hands. I think the Friday is what does it.
I'm heading out of town that weekend.
And I will be in town. This is on workers' comp and Butch might be able to address it a little bit more because he usually attends.
They just, you go down, you have a good meal and then they go through and they'll give a, they'll give a report on how the finances are doing. This one will give a report down and Benetech will give a report on how the things have changed or, you know, which ones they chose to go through and they've raised the cost on some. They did have a new thing that they put in, they would like to raise it. It was $75,000, if they, anything up to $75,000, but now they'd like to raise it to $100, because it's, and when they can, you know, when they go through the program and it doesn't take long to get up to $100,000. So, that's one of the reasons why they asked that it be increased to $100,000 before it has to come to the committee. And I told them, go ahead as far as I'm concerned, because like I say, it's going to be there no matter what. I mean, it's not, not like you're gaining anything by holding off to have another separate meeting. Alls they do is they send a, send a paper to me because I'm on the Recital 7 Committee and they send a thing saying that this is what we've agreed to and just sign it, you know. And I did ask Jim Parsons when I first got on, I said, what happens if I put no on that? He said, I don't know, I've never had that problem. So, I mean, it's not like you don't really have a lot of say into it. It's just, they've got to keep this thing going so that they can, you know, hopefully some of them, they close out and it won't end up costing us any more money.
And you want somebody riding along with you?
You can go down.
And I might learn.
Like I say, it's a very good, they put out, they put out a very good meal.
Well, I'm not worried.
No, Frank Ward, Frank Ward, what? Quite a few times and like I say, every, every board member is on the committee era is down as being part of it, so I'd say anybody can go.
But it's nice to have somebody else go with him. If he can't make it again, then somebody else, you know, has been through the routine.
I'll do that.
Alright, well, good. And Cory can set a car. And I think you'd normally meet down at the bus garage, right?
Greg, you going this time?
Yep. Big Greg, you and I then.
Okay.
You can get down to the bus garage at 5:00.
Alright. Okay, we're up to presentations. We have two of them. The grades 3 through 8 ELA and math test results and then the 2016-17 Regents SAT and AP test results.
Okay, I guess we, so Mr. Gates and I are going to talk a little bit about the 3 through 8 tests. For ELA and math, we, when we put this together, we thought that we have to start here simply because it is such a big part of what's happening with our test scores. What I didn't put on here, because I was looking at some, some data after this, is that when you count in our partial refusals, we're in the top 10% in our state, Walton is, in terms of test refusals. That's, that's where we are. We're in, we're in the top 10, we're Sherwin-Urbil and our BOCES basically tied. There are a couple of points ahead of us because the state doesn't count partial refusals, but we had kids who took day one and refused day two and day three or took day one and day two and refused day three. In any case, if you don't take all three days, you can, you get a level one, which is the lowest score. I, and I'll speak to that a little bit more, but if you look here, you'll see the grades 3 through 5, you can see what our refusal rates look like. And then our overall ELA for the elementary school is 53.4% for students in grades 3 through 5.
And then if you look at the 6 or 8 grade, it's interesting how, you know, 34% refusal in 6 and then we spike up to 71 in 7 and 63 in 8 for the ELA. So, overall 57%, so more than half the students refused.
And when you add those two together, you're looking at about 55%. What, what the state does is they look at ELA in math for 3 through 8 to generate that, that overall score and that's what put us so high. And we have schools in our BOCES that only have 12% refusal rate, 15%. The average is probably 20-something percent and we're 55%. Here are the test refusals for math. If you, if you look at, go back, if you look at ELA, grades 3 through 5 and then math, it dropped a little bit. We had a couple of kids who wanted to take the math test, did not want to take the ELA. They felt more comfortable taking the math. But our refusal rate still creeped up from 3rd grade, 4th grade to 5th grade. So, our overall was still over 52%.
There's a little star there and this will come up later on in the 8th grade math enrollment. If you notice the difference, it's numbers there, is we had 15 students that are, that are advanced, so they take a Regents test. So, those aren't included in the numbers, that's why that number dipped down. We talked about that later.
That's not total, yeah. Alright, so here we go. These are grades 3, 4 and 5 ELA for the 2016-2017 school year. You can see our total enrollment, number of students taking, number of students refusing, and then our proficiency. One thing I did, and I'll walk up to the board to show you. In parentheses, I put this other number in parentheses because that shows you the number if I count the partial refusals. And you can see that it bumps us up a good percent, not quite a percent in some cases, sometimes it's a little more. And you'll see, like especially the 5th grade, it bumped it up a little over a percent, which is, you know, it can, it's a couple of kids, a couple of kids here, a couple of kids there. But I just wanted to see that for my own information as to what happens when you look at those partial refusals. You see the BOCES average, the state average, and then what our ranking is within the BOCES. And for elementary school right now, you're seeing 16 component schools. As we go on, you're going to see that number change because what we did is like in golf and other things, if there were ties, I lowered, we lowered the number. I mean, we talked about lowering the number, so in some cases, you're going to see a number out of 15, a number out of 14. That's because we did ties, you can't, you can't rank the ties separately. So, it's, it's out of a ranking based on the total number of individual scores. So, that's what we look like for 3rd grade, 4th grade and 5th grade. Our 5th grade, as you see, 6 out of 16, we're in the top half of our BOCES. We were ranked pretty high, we did a pretty good job, yet we had a lot of refusal, so it's hard to read anything into this.
And then, piggybacking right from 5th to 6, you know, we finished, as you can see right at the bottom left-hand corner, 6 out of 50. So, with, you know, that was a higher percentage of kids taking the test. We had 44 students out of our 67 in 6th grade take the test. We ranked in the top half of the BOCES. And then as the refusal numbers are higher, the rankings seem to go down as well. And again, we don't, you know, correlation there, you know, just what the data says, we don't know. But 6th grade, we had a lot of kids taking it and they did what?
So, then we have our math, 3 through 5 math. You can see enrollment, number taking, number refusing, our percentage again, bigger difference in some of the percentages based on the partial refusals and then how we rank. And you can see, in both cases with 5th grade, we're basically in the top, by the time we get to 5th grade, and this has been proven out in several years, we're looking at the data, that our 5th grade is usually in the top half of our BOCES when we do those test scores. That's how we usually were competing then.
And Mike, before you go on, just to clarify, 3rd grade. So, if a student decided they wanted to take the math portion, refused the ELA and where it went up 2%, that doesn't?
That would be just for math.
That's just for math.
Right, but that, that doesn't count though, right? Because we, they, they opted out as a partial?
Well, the 26% is our proficiency based on the state numbers.
Yeah.
However, we had kids in 3rd grade take day one and then see all their friends not taking the test and they refused day two and day three. That 28.3% is our proficiency rate if I take out the partial refusals because the state scores them at a level one. Which I don't, I mean, it doesn't seem fair. I wish they would have a way.
Count it, one of the tests, right.
Count, yeah, they didn't finish the test. We were talking about if we're, Mr. Gates is coaching, because he did soccer, we'll pick another sport. He's coaching football.
Coaching football, so there's, there's 30 guys on my football team. So, more than half aren't going to show up and I don't know what half. So, all my linemen didn't show up. Are we going to be too successful on that night? Or basketball, we have 12, 14 guys on the basketball team and, you know, a little more than half aren't going to show up. You know, if all our big guys show up, we're going to have trouble moving ball off or, you know, vice versa. If it's all guards, are we going to rebound? You know, so, you know, looking at the numbers as you talk about it, you know, it's hard to, it's hard to really see much of.
And there's no, there's no, there's some rhyme or reason to some of the kids who refuse based on parent groups who get together, but in some cases, it defies logic sometimes.
So, I understand this correctly, if they do a partial refusal, it scores automatically a one?
Yeah.
So, they're automatically below proficient?
Oh, yeah.
And it counts against you. And that 2%, 2.3% represents if you take that partial out.
Yeah, I just wanted to show it because there is a difference.
I just wanted to make sure that it was clear that a partial refusal really counts against you.
I can think of a kid as a good math student who refused day three and you can't, when, when the score came back, it was a level one. And that, that refusal, partial refusal. And we had, what most likely happened, or most, most commonly happened is that kids would take day one, come for day two and look around, well, I know you didn't take it and you didn't take it, you didn't take it. And then they say they don't want to take it. And we can't force them to take it. We put the test in front of them and then they can say they don't want to take it. So, we don't, we don't have any control over that. We can't force them or coerce them anyway. So, that's what our, so again, our, our 5th grade starts climbing up in the rankings.
6th grade wise, and again, you can see some of the tide there. 6th grade, our numbers were not too great for the math results in 7th and 8th. And I have some things, I'll talk on another slide on things we're going to, you know, be monitoring with the middle school math.
So, here's what, because the state tests really, they don't give us the kind of information that we, that every school hopes for. And that's one of the reasons that New York State is no longer, they, they just approved the next generation learning standards. New York State is no longer going to be using Common Core standards. The next generation standards in many cases read very similarly, but they're implementing a brand-new set of standards. They have moved, for example, they've moved standards out of kindergarten into 1st or 2nd because they weren't developmentally appropriate under the Common Core. So, there is some shifting going on. So, we've got three years where we're implementing a brand-new curriculum and they're still going to be testing us on the old Common Core standards. And then in 2021, we're going to have, be tested on the next generation learning standard. So, there's a lot of interesting things going on. So, we are using, and Andy will speak to the middle school, we're using different assessments internally to help us figure out where kids are, who needs extra help. So, we have our Go Math, we do a prerequisite, that's what Mrs. Lewis saw. She saw kids taking the prerequisite for say 4th grade and when they're finished, we're going to compare with the post-test they took in 3rd grade to see if they've slipped any and what their skill level is going into 4th grade math. We do that twice a year, kindergarten through 5th grade. We have a computerized assessment called the Star Math Assessment. We do that four times per year, kindergarten through 5th grade. We're just now completing our first round this week. And it's a quick test on the computer, but it's multiple choice and the assessment learns and grows with the child and gets them to their frustration level with each assessment. It keeps, it keeps them, creating more complexity. So, it's kind of, it's an interesting test, but we use it as just one indicator. Fanta-Simpinell Benchmark Reading Assessments. We do these twice a year in the entire school where we assess a reading level and then we use that to determine instruction, academic intervention, things like that. Imagine Learning, we have another online program that the kids rotate through during computer lab throughout the year, so it's once every four days. Plus, teachers use it in the classroom as one of their centers. And it also provides some assessment information for us. Our phonemic awareness or phonics assessments and our curriculum for K-1 and part of 2 is called Magic Penny Reading. They also use it in the universal pre-kindergarten with Mrs. Gates. Then we have code knowledge, which you're going to hear more about in the middle school as well and Mrs. Hoover initiated that in this district. So, we're looking at that for a phonemic assessment and there's a curriculum that goes with it for grades 2 through 5. Then we have something called Level Literacy Intervention Assessments and, which goes along with the curriculum. So, we're doing those assessments in kindergarten through 3rd grade. And then we have something called Easy CBM. CBM stands for Curriculum-Based Measures and we do those kindergarten through 5th grade in our academic intervention programs with our reading teachers. And then we have something called DIBELS, which is Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy Skills, which we do kindergarten through 5th grade in academic intervention services as needed. And that doesn't include spelling tests and the history test and the writing and all the stuff that we, we do as part of a normal curriculum where we're assessing kids and filling out a report form. That's in addition to.
Mike, before you go on to that, can you just go, is there any questions on that? We've really come a long way, I would say in the last probably four years at the elementary, Mike, with these. So, the teachers are really using this as their assessments, not, where before it was the state test to see where they're at at different levels. So, we actually have many sources to see where the students are.
I just, my question would be, from a board standpoint, we're talking about how we get good data, what kind of data is relevant, how are the comparisons relevant? In your mind, how do we take that assessment that's in-house and look at it at a global perspective to make sure that the students we, as a district, are working with are performing at the highest level possible? And how do we compare that out? How do we make that comparison and jump from this to a global perspective?
Well, the, the, a lot of these assessments have sort of some benchmark baseline scores that are, that were developed for like sort of nationwide. For example, like the Star Math, every state that uses the Star Math assessments, all of our data and their data all go. of our data and their data all go to a common base, database. And then they look at student growth percentiles and things like that to tell us how we fit within the greater framework. So a lot of these are done that way. Like Magic Penny Reading, a lot of these have, when you do the assessment, it says, this is, at this grade, at this year, this is what the student should be able to perform. So we have benchmarks to base our, the individual scores on. And that lets us know whether they're performing on, above, or below a grade level.
Is there any way we can summarize those? I'm assuming this has been done for multiple years, or is there any way we can see trends or get a, get a picture that way with some of these that are built in?
Over time, I think we can. The, the, doing, doing the K-five assessments, we've been doing those now for just a couple of years, so the, the kind of data that you're looking for probably wouldn't exist. But as we go forward, we'll have, I mean, we're gathering more and more data. But some of it is relatively new, like Mr. Close said, in the last little while, we've been starting to add in more assessments as we found that we can't, that the state tests just don't give us enough useful information.
And have you, have we tracked a particular group going through school that is refusing the test? I mean, like, you know, this year's second grade, next year, is that progressing right through, or is it kind of all?
There's definitely certain grade levels that have peaks and valleys.
But there's, the same kids keep refusing year after year. And what happens in terms of them giving the, the school a growth measure? Because they look at student growth. Giving us a growth measure, giving the teachers in fourth, in fifth grade, and sixth, seventh, eighth, the growth measure, they can't, if, if a child refuses in third grade, takes it in fourth grade, they can't give a growth score for that child because there's nothing to compare it to. If they take it in fourth and then refuse again in fifth and take it in sixth, that leave, that gap is going to prevent them from using that data to provide us with any growth information on the student. So students have to take it two years in a row for us to be able to get any kind of growth measurement.
So I think we go back and look at these assessments to see where-
Yeah, so we use these, and this gives us a, a plenty of information to use to determine whether students are on grade level or below grade level, and then we provide academic intervention.
So does that affect our percentages also then? Because there's, like, say if a student skipped third grade and took it in fourth grade, they could've done very well, but how does that rank us out? Because we can't compare it to their, their test.
We can't compare their test, but the overall percentage is just year to year. It's just year to year. But you're looking at, when you try to compare last year's third grade to this year's third grade, you're looking at a different cohort, different group of kids, and it's not the same test. They write a new test because they release some test questions, they're always doing field tests, so it's a different test. Sometimes our teachers will score it and say, wow, this one's harder than last year, this passage is really tricky. One year, we had a, a field test question that was on the third, fourth, and fifth grade test. So if it's okay for fifth grade, it's too hard for fourth grade, it's very hard. And it was on astrolabes and doing, you know, like, using the sea, you know, being, being a sailor and using those kinds of devices to navigate. And it was, it was a pretty high level. So our third graders hit that, there was a second passage in, and we had tears in some of the kids, it was too hard. And it's all we also saw on the fifth grade test.
That's one of my frustrations, and I know, Roger, you've heard this. For me to have a hard time interpreting all of this information and still not coming out with, are we seeing growth? And it looks like, you know, with all these other tests, we are seeing maybe district growth, but at the state level, those, the state tests, that's where the frustration lies with me. Because, and I know, Michelle will touch on this, with us being determined a focus school, and if I'm correct in saying this, they base that on our state tests.
Mm-hmm, correct.
So if we have so many refusals, we may never come out of that, that category.
That's correct.
And, and that's, that's what's frustrating to me is that we, we need to make sure that we use the same, the same data, so we can relate back year after year to say, this is where we're moving in.
And we're using that through our, through our response intervention, RTI process. Where we, when, when a student enters RTI, we start talking about their performance in school. We start gathering this data specifically, I mean, we, we have a folder just for them. And when we have our meetings, we're talking about what we're seeing in the classroom. We invite parents, they attend the meetings, and we, we, that's, they're part of our committee. And we start trying to develop an academic intervention plan for them to be successful. And that may include reading teachers, the math teacher, like Ms. Lewis met Jackie Smith, and she does math. And it could end up leading to a CSE referral. If we think they're, if the child's not responding to our interventions over time and we get to the, the third tier, we may make a referral.
And let me ask you this, you know how the state reports come back to the parents? Your child was proficient in level one, two, three, or four. If they refuse, that comes back to them as a level one?
Only if they took one day of the test. If they refused all three days, they get nothing.
They get nothing.
That's not, the, the full refusals are not represented in any of these numbers. It's just marked as a refusal. The only, the only thing you see is under our refusal numbers, you see the percentage. They don't get any feedback from the state at all because they, they didn't take any part of the test. They didn't, they didn't even put their name on it.
See, and I get the controversy with the state testing, I understand that completely. And the work that you guys have done, thank you very much, because I did, I had a hard time, you know, coming to terms with any of this. But I, I think where, where we're going is, in order for our district to, to project out to the public how we've increased in, you know, our testing, or if we haven't, the only way that we can really share that, or if the information that's coming to the public is from the state, they're not getting totally accurate information unless everyone decides to take the test.
If you're the half of our students that's taking the test, like, like I said before, we're, we're, we're basically, if you, if you count the partial refusals, we're in the top ten. If you don't, we're twelve percent. We're the top twelve percent of state, of schools, and that's out of seven hundred and something. We were ranked, it was, I think it was seven hundred and something schools. So think about that number, and think about us being in the top ten or twelve percent of test refusal schools. This is a hotbed for test refusals. It just is, I mean, Walton and Sherwin-Elton.
And have you described to us an even more monumental problem? If your state tests, really, if they've changed a test and they're gonna continue with the same, they change the methodology of teaching, but they changed, have not changed a test, and they're not gonna catch up until 2021? Have, have you just described a problem that's gonna be even a bigger gap between now and 2021 if your testing is not gonna match up with the instruction?
We can do you one better. This year's test is only two days. All the previous tests were three days. So they can't even compare, the, the data we're giving you right now, and we give the test in, in the spring, we can't even compare that to what we're giving you now because it's going from three days to two days. They're simplifying, they're, they're, they're still unlimited time, but it's two days, and they're, and they're still making changes to test questions. And then in three years, in 2021, the test will be completely rewritten and based on the next generation learning standards, not the Common Core learning standards, which are mostly, I'd say sixty-something percent are-
Almost like seventy percent are the same, something thirty percent.
But they, they're moving things around, they're changing reading levels for expectations. So this year's test, we can't compare to the data we're giving you right now. And those tests don't count because it's kind of, there's kind of a moratorium on using them for any purpose other than just to, just to publicize them.
So we're having, obviously, discussions at the board level of what data is relevant, and how do we actually make these measurements, and how do we make sense of this? And then, at the end of this, how do we put this back out to the general public to say, here's where we are, honestly and openly and transparent as we can, this is exactly where we are, and this is the exact testing that we can reproduce year after year after year. So I guess we have a monumental task.
And Andy and I were talking, something that isn't, that isn't present in any of these numbers is, okay, Andy's taking the test and I'm not, but we're all sitting in the same classroom, and he's watching me not take the test. Is he doing his best? Is he taking his time, or is he getting finished quickly? Is he rushing through? I have no, we, I just know teachers said, wow, they didn't, they didn't take a long time. And that, we encourage them, take your time, I'll take, kids who need extra time, we can move them to another classroom, things like that. That, that's sort of a, those, the intangible, I don't know that, how we measure that. But that's, that, that's gotta be having an effect as well because they're seeing their friends not taking. Peer pressure's powerful.
And there is, and, and the commissioner isn't budging on this at all. I mean, she's still, we're gonna have the state test. She did go from the three-day to two, but I don't see, I don't see her changing, you know, saying, one, we're gonna get rid of it, or two, it's gonna be a mandate just like the Regents. I don't see her doing that.
And I don't think a name change, you know, was a solution.
And people have asked and they beg, give a test now and give one in the spring, and let's compare now to then, like we do here. They won't do that. So they're trying to compare one year to the next year rather than a pre and a post. If we gave a pre-test on the state and we got feedback, we'd have plenty of time to really attack some of those, those learning deficits in real time. So we're using this information to attack those learning deficits. And I think we're doing a pretty good job. I think there's a lot, we're, we're identifying a lot of kids who need the extra help, and we're providing it.
Are there a lot of districts around doing the same, similar?
Uh, yeah, I mean, not, some-
I don't think they're doing it tarred to this.
We, we use quite a few.
I'll speak to the middle school on the next slide, and I guess I'll, um-
Yeah, there we go.
Like, and this might, this might be me stating and you're all thinking this, but I think it's important to think about pre-K through twelve. We're all in this together. You know, what happens at pre-K, K, one, two, three, that transfers to middle school. And, you know, if there's gaps, we gotta figure out how to fix them. And I'll, I'll talk about one way we fix them. In, in middle school, if I'm sending my middle schoolers to high school, we gotta figure out, so we're all in this together, and I think it's good we're all presenting together. And I just wanted to, you know, highlight the obvious, but, I mean, it's just not third grade where that learning starts. It starts in pre-K, you know? It's just not in sixth grade where that learning starts. So one of the things, in, in, to speak to the previous mention, what are other districts doing? At a LEX meeting, Mr. Knuski and I both sat, and it was a targeted literacy. And school districts are trying to figure out what they can do for literacy. And if you've heard Dr. Reed, myself, Mr. Knuski, the last year and a half, we have a literacy program in the middle school, where every morning, every child, accelerated children, but they're getting some extra literacy in their accelerated classes, they're working on reading, writing, vocabulary, we're finding a ton of those gaps. Mrs. Hoover, with her Code Knowledge Intervention, we're, we're finding gaps of kids that are making very accelerated gains of multiple grade levels, you know? And we're getting them caught up, and now we have a specific literacy group that is targeted to, there's different types of gaps they have now that they're past the code knowledge. Every other school there was trying to get something like that in place. And we have that in the last year and a half. And I think that's what you saw in our ELA results, you know, was a lot of that. We have a targeted program that's, that's paying dividends. And it, it's gonna take some more time, but I, I was excited, I was sitting there, you know, as a, you know, first-year principal, and all these other administrators that are veteran administrators, like, well, we wanna get this in our school. And I'm like, we're doing all that. So, I mean, that was, that was kinda neat to see. The SRIs, that's, that was something we started to implement last year, and that's, that gives a Lexile level to the children. Our data team puts that information together, it's sent home to parents, it tells the parents if they're above or below grade level what they can do to catch them up, and that's recorded out four times a year. The Imagine Math is brand-new this year, and that's a similar, we're working on a form letter to kind of copy what we give out for SRIs that'll tell the, the parents what their math level is, so that they're above or below level, and what, and they'll see gains, growth over the course of the year. Mr. Pichonich back here, he presented to our middle school staff, we're gonna use a lot of our academic lab time when the students don't have anything to do, and they say, oh, I got nothing to do. We have an Imagine Last Learning Program, software program, where, where students can have access to an online teacher, where they can, you know, get caught up and get some interventions in place. As Mr. Snyder said earlier, we do all our content, pre and post-assessments, they're doing a pre-test to see where they're at and where their gaps were at, and at the end of the year, they do post-test. And, you know, the Code Knowledge, I think, is a phenomenal program. Gloria Ostrander at BOSI's today, every training she has for this Code Knowledge Intervention program are filling up, like, as soon as, and our, and our teachers are trained and doing it with Vitality, and we're seeing gains, we have data on those gains. And then we have AAS services, you know, for math and some literacy that, so it doesn't look like there's a lot there, as far as, Mr. Snyder has an abundance of grade levels, you know? Pre-K to five.
Yeah, you gotta think it's six grade levels.
But what, what we do and what we put in place the last two years with some of the other administrators' help, I'm not gonna take full credit for all that, I've been in these shoes a couple of months here, but, you know, we, we, we're doing good. And, and that's the data that's relevant to us and our teachers.
And we're doing it with more frequency. I mean, you can see from here, you see two times, four times, two times. Ongoing, you see this four times, three times. I mean, this is more than just once, we're doing this multiple times. So we're gathering data at certain checkpoints throughout the year.
Yeah, I remember last year I had a parent come, hey, I got this letter that has this Lexile score, and I've never seen anything like this before. And I said, oh, it's a new thing we're doing. Well, my daughter did good, I just, I'd never seen it before. I said, well, it's something new, you know, so, you know, I got a couple of phone calls, and everybody was happy with getting reported on where their child was and what they could do to show some growth.
And then they can see the growth from September, and then in June, when they get the other, yeah.
So then we just, we have that as the end, so we, if, if we had any questions about, we just wanna say that, you know, that, that drives a lot of the data, is that, that number. And it's quite large. Again, I said, we're, we're either in the top ten or top twelve, depending on whether you use the state's number or use the modified number using all of the partial refusals. We're in the top ten, top twelve percent of our state for test refusals. I mean, there are schools that have zero test refusals.
And we actually have less test refusals than the year before?
More. No, we're up, we're up ten percent.
We're at more test refusals this year?
At the elementary school, we're up ten percent. At the elementary school, it depends on the grade level. You're down in sixth and-
Right.
Pretty much steady in the other ones. But I'm up ten percent.
Okay.
So I don't, I don't know if this is, and we, we held a, a parent, a, a information session, we wanted people to come just to talk about the state test. Didn't get a lot, I mean, it wasn't, you know, in the cafeteria with two hundred and fifty people. But we made opportunities to stress the importance.
That ten percent, you know, the cohort of sixth grade left, so that's now, you know, but the seventh and eighth grade's so high that it didn't really affect the middle school results, but, you know, that cohort left you, so your refusal rate went high. I mean, that's what we were talking about earlier with the cert.
Right.
Tracks, true.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and that's where, like, what Grayden touched on, what the public is receiving is SAT scores. They're not getting this information. They're not getting, you know, what we, what was just presented to us. And I think that's something that, once that's established and that data can be shared with the board, that would be beneficial because that's something that we can take back to the public.
Right, because there are bright spots in the, these test scores.
Right.
So is there, is somebody working out a methodology to start phoning in and presenting these on a regular basis where, you know, you're, you're comparing apples to apples? I mean, are we gonna get to that point, and is it gonna be soon, do you think?
We've got, I mean, the, the test this year, we can't compare it to the previous year's scores at all. And then the year after that, so they'll do three, three years of the two-day test, And then the year after that, so they'll do three years of the two-day test, but we're, all of the schools are transitioning away from the Common Core learning standards to the next-generation standards.
I'm actually, I'm sorry, I was talking about our, your in-house.
Yeah, in-house.
I've already understood that this, if you're not gonna get the refusal rates up, then you're gonna be challenged with that data.
In-house, we're gonna have.
Is it relevant? So the in-house data becomes very imperative to us to look at and say, okay, what are we doing pre coming in? How are they comparing as individuals? How are they comparing as a group? Does that group continue to grow up through? Those comparisons are gonna be critical for any of, anybody to digest this information because if you look at the straight test scores from the state delivered to us to look at, there's nothing that we can say that's great about that. And you guys are clearly telling us that's not a clear vision of what is going on. And there's other things in place to show us better data. So we have to understand that data, and we have to understand when we're gonna receive it and go from there.
What I'm seeing is, and this is probably gonna get me in trouble, but anyway, the, it's not, the public can't look at this state, at what they get from the state, and say, well, they're not doing a good job in this school. Because obviously, if their children aren't taking these tests, the parents have to accept some of that responsibility for us being a focus school. Am I not right?
Well, with, with the term that, you know?
Test refusals, yes.
Yes.
But also, just a couple things, just on that question, being a focus school, we've really had some great opportunities to expand our professional development and to do, like the code knowledge and our data team. So, and we knew probably, I think, Mike, three, and Michelle, three years ago, that this data wasn't gonna help us at all. So that's why we started to go and look at each, these programs. And we didn't, so just so you know, we didn't pick it out of the hat. We didn't say we wanna go to this program. I mean, we really researched the program. People came, they, we had our teachers involved, staff involved, things like that. And then our data teams, we do have data teams at the middle school and the high school. And the code knowledge just started in fifth grade, Mike, this year? That's pushing down.
We're using it, like, three through five, but.
Right. With Kim. And we had Bosse's coming to do all this training. So it was an effort for everyone to do these things. But you know, as far as the public, like, so you know, we're presenting this tonight. You know, everybody wants, you know, you saw the headlines, but you know, there's nobody here seeing this. But we're presenting it, we're taking the time to explain it. So I don't know how to get that more information out. It's there, it'll be on the webpage, it'll be, you know, in the newspaper. And as far as the parents saying no, we've had those meetings, and we've had maybe one or two, maybe three parents that came.
Then they need to accept that part of this is their responsibility. It's not us, is what I mean.
Well, and I think like Grayden said, if we can get other data to show that we have district growth, I think that's gonna help. The state tests, as frustrating as they are to a lot of parents, and I understand it, and to the, you know, the children themselves, like you just gave a good example. If you're sitting there not taking the test and somebody next to you is taking the test, I know, when I go, you know, for a certain test, if somebody puts down their pen first, I'm thinking, oh, my gosh, you know? So it does, it puts pressure on them. So I think that adds to it. But we need to show, we need something that we can say, yes, we have district growth. We are seeing it. Even if that one student, you know, gets a couple more answers right and goes from a level one to a level two, or even a low level two to a high level two, that's growth. You know, that's something to celebrate.
And the kids who are taking the state tests, I mean, I can speak like at Towson, they're making growth. I mean, the state gives the elementary school a growth score, and it's been ineffective. It's been ineffective. So they're saying the kids are making growth, but they're, when you compare just the levels, they may not look like they're all level threes or level fours. But it's, again, it's incomplete, partial information. And that's what we get year after year. This is our fourth year of test refusals. This is not, I mean, this has been, this is the, the results we're giving you today represent four years of test refusals in Walton.
So maybe in the future with our data teams, we could, I think what you're asking, Grayden, is we could come back and say, here's our SRI, you know, here's some improvements, maybe picking some of those programs that we have.
Something that we can compare to each and every year.
I really think the biggest thing is the transparency issue. People don't understand, I didn't understand, what the impacts were refusals, what the impacts are partial refusals. Your data's incomplete. How are you drawing conclusions off that data that's incomplete and comparing around the state and saying this is accurate? I didn't get that. I understand it now. So an education outreach program has to take place where the people and the public understand that's incomplete data and be honest. This is why it's incomplete data. This is the results that does show. And by the way, because our test refusals are so high, staff has come up with a new metrics that is, from a national standard down, that shows in-house exactly how we're going to do this. We're not creating something that's just gonna show growth. We're creating something off standards that is tangible, it's apple-to-apple, and you guys can look at it, the books are open, it's transparent. That's all people want. I mean, at the end of the day.
I mean, like I have all the test refusals by district. We're pretty much double everyone except for one. I mean, Sherburne is with us. And the rest, if you take one district out, who's, they're about, what, 14 points lower than us. Everyone else is 22, 21, 20, 17. So you do the average on that, we're double of all the schools we're comparing ourselves.
Just to, so, just so you know, I think, and Andy and Michelle, you talked about this. So when we do these, like the tests, they, parents get that information. And during report cards, they get that information, even like Imagine Learning does, they do their data where they can see where the growth is. I know Imagine Math does that, that we discuss. And then when it comes into RTI, they discuss that. They take some of those, correct?
Yeah, when we're at RTI meetings, we talk about a lot of different bits of data. I mean, the reading teachers are generating graphs and charts, and we're tracking information. We're trying to do a better job every single year. When you saw that list of things, that represents us continually trying to add ways to measure the kids, but not to make it about testing because we wanna instruct and we want the kids to have a good school day. So we were trying not to overburden them with this as well because you can get to a point where it's just, it's overwhelming. But a lot of those are done, some of them are K-5 and 6'8". Some of those are done just through academic intervention. So it's part of the natural process. If I'm going to a reading teacher, I'm getting reading instruction, but maybe one day out of the week or every two weeks, they're doing a running record where I'm being assessed. You're reading a book, but I'm counting every word, I'm counting every error, and then I'm comparing it to a standard score. Where should that child be? And then I can give up a percent. And we're looking for them to exceed that percentage to say that they can move on to the next level. So we're doing those kinds of assessments on the go all the time. Years ago, I watched a kid do a reading assessment, and he read the first book, and the teacher gave him a bunch of praise, and he's all excited. She gave him another book. He read that, she gave him all kinds of praise, gave him a third book. And when he finished, he got up, walked out of the room like, I nailed it. She was going backwards. She was going to an easier book the whole time. He didn't know it. She was trying to level him. But he was, he was getting feedback, and he was trying his best, and we got an accurate measurement, but he was getting an easier book, you know, from the start to the finish, to find out where his reading level was. But they don't know they're being, they're under that assessment because we're using it internally to try to drive instruction. But we share it with parents in RTI meetings if we get to that.
So I think the only thing that I want is, if I was a parent and I got my students pre and post-test, any way, any scenarios, I'm looking at my student.
Right.
Right? So that doesn't give me the, how is the whole district doing? You know, I mean, so maybe that one-on-one where the parents are getting it, they're going, wow, that's great, my kid has started off here and ended here, that's awesome. But it doesn't give the district feel for how things are going as a group. And I think, I think just getting a plan together on that and outlaying it.
Maybe as simple as, you know, these are percentages of kids right now below the level in this grade level.
Yeah.
And I'm just talking right now. These are percentages of kids on grade level, these are percentages above, within our own system.
And that's what I was saying, I think if the data teams combined something like that.
Yeah, they can pull those reports, SRIs, imagine how those can be pulled. We even have kids' names, it just shows you. And how, that's something that we could have data teams present to you.
There's ways to generate data. And as we gather more, we're able to compare year to year.
I think that would be beneficial. I mean, if we're having this much difficulty to interpret, you know, all this, I can just imagine what parents feel like, you know? And when they're only getting one source.
Some of the others we have, you know, multiple years.
Maybe later in the year, we can come back and present.
That would be good.
Thank you for taking the sun.
Yes.
It's monumental.
We appreciate it.
Nice day, Mr. Snyder and I spent.
Subhanallah.
Well, we, you know, we're living it because we're trying to find improvements. But we, on the event team, we're always talking about ways to improve.
I've got enough, I'm gonna be too much to talk here. Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, we have the pleasure of presenting our SAT, Regents, and AP data from 2016, 17 school year. First thing I wanna start with is the dinosaur, not the, the dinosaur in Rome, that's been out there about our SAT scores. There was a recent report from Upstate New York Schools article out of Buffalo that reported the following for Walton Central School District SAT scores for 2016. 426 verbal, or it's called critical reading, 418 math, and then a 944 combined. And these numbers were based on only 22 students. So when we talk about incomplete data at the elementary and middle school level, very similar situation here. All seniors who took the exam, that was it. The 50 students who took the SAT during the 16, 17 school year, and that includes the juniors and a sophomore, averaged 558 on the verbal, 518 in the math, with a combined of 1072. So it's a very different picture than what had been presented. And when you're looking at SATs, Mr. Preston was very good about keeping track of looking at our cohorts year after year, looking at the SAT information. And if you wanna quickly define really what SATs are meant to do?
Yeah, SATs are basically one of the criteria that colleges use for admissions. And SATs are a predictor, they're considered a predictor for how a student will do the first year of college, not over a four-year, course of a four-year degree, first semester of college. So it's only looking at a student's score based on these specific things for predicting one year, in one year only. And some colleges right now are SAT optional. They've completely opted out of using the SAT for admission. Other schools right now are not using a lot of the two-year programs, are not even taking SAT results at this time. So, and the group that it took, it took the 22 students for the class of 2016. They looked at the specific cohort of the class of 2016, and that's the group that they used. Typically, when we look at the assessment results for SATs for us, we look at the entire year. So the 50 students is usually all the reports that we get. 2016, 17 school year, that's what we look at, as opposed to the cohort, which is class of 2016.
A little background on that cohort of 2016, and by no means is it to put them down at all. It was a very small class, 58 students, and we only had six honor students in that class. Conversely, this past school year, 2017, we had 20 honor students and 68 graduates.
Yeah.
There you go.
I'm gonna shut it off.
Okay.
That's it?
Take the controller. We just.
You did warn them.
Okay. Here is the breakdown for cohort group for SATs for the last few years. And before you even jump into 15, 16, let's take a quick look at 2017. We highlighted that because if you look at that cohort group right there, look at how we closed the gap to the national average compared to previous school years.
So this is the group. This right here is what that news article was based on, which was the graduating class in 2016. The kids who just graduated, if you look at the same cohort, is what these numbers are pulled from. That's the number from the kids who just graduated this past June, or now most of them in college. We also went ahead and looked at this year's seniors and those who took the test so far. Now, obviously, some will retake, but these are the scores of those students so far that are in their senior year. Again, they will, some of them will retake for higher scores as well. So those scores, obviously, from the class of 2016 to 2017 have increased. And then obviously, you know, some good start for the group that's gonna be the class of 18.
And there are a lot, there are a multitude of factors that influence how kids do on SATs. And truth be told, most school districts feel this way. A lot of responsibility for SAT preparation falls on the student and the parent. It's not one of those criteria that the schools are judged by on the state level. But the reality is, you wanna help the kid get every bench they can to get into college, you do wanna help them with their SATs. But really, a lot, if you emphasize structure and rigor in the regular classrooms and the core subjects, you're going to see improved results in your SATs. And we do have some ideas about some, you know, some reasons why we've seen a bit of a ramp up in our scores this past, go to work on the next slide.
I know that Rick do it this.
Yeah, we're letting Rick do it. Okay, we're gonna jump to advanced placement exams. We had two exams this year, first time we have offered those courses for AP. That was English and US History. And we had one student that took World History online. We had 45 AP exams given this year. That's the most we've ever had in Walton. Forty-five students take AP exams. If you look very carefully, if you look at O'Neill High School, English is the only one, and we're not, really not that far off when you look at it, we were average of 2.44 out of five. There are five levels, five being the highest, one being the lowest. In comparison to New York State, which was 268, and then the US was 268. But then in US History and Biology, we exceeded the national and the state level in those AP results. I do wanna say, we have the advantage of having complete information when it comes to Regents and AP exams, something that elementary and the middle don't have. And I have to say that a lot of these results can be attributed to the hard work that is being done in the elementary and in most schools. Anything else on AP?
No, I'm just thrilled that we have that many kids take AP courses. The rigor is there, and it gives kids opportunity.
And I do wanna thank Gordon and Mr. Cluck for making that available. We were able to help the kids pay for those tests this year. That is, that's a big deterrent in some districts. Kids have to pay for those examinations. So we're very fortunate that we do that. Okay, Regents exam passing rates, that's a whole lot of numbers. And how good, and the yellow is good, yellow is good. We took 14, 15 as a baseline because the year before that, 13, 14, and 12, 13, we're big transition years for assessments. And just a quick little, I guess, a little lesson on assessments. What you see in Regents exams, those are, those are normed tests, okay? They'll take every kid's score, find out what they got as a raw score. Then they'll set a standard. It's not criterion-based, it's norm-referenced. Which means that sometimes when they re-norm these tests, you have no idea how the state's gonna rate them. So what we tried to do is take 14, 15 as a baseline. And you'll see a lot of transitions here, sometimes with the old tests were phased out and you had Common Core come in. In the yellow, we took years where we saw, in some cases, significant jumps, all right? That was, that was the end of 15, 16 school year, in those passing rates for those Regents exams. And then in the 16, 17, even if there was a slight downtick, because in the case of, say, even 6, 7%, depending on how many kids took the test in a small district, that can be one or two students. So we kept the yellow going where there was an upward trend. So when you look at these kinds of results, you have to look longitudinally, meaning over a course of several years. So really, this year, we're gonna be looking very, very closely at the 17, 18 results to see if we can see that continued upward trend. For example, a good example is even physics, all right, 29% in 14, 15, huge jump to 83% passing, and 69 this past year. Again, that 69 within a small number of kids that took it, I think constitutes two students. So we are seeing some significant increases there. Anything else?
Yeah, the biggest thing that I wanna mention with this slide too, is this only includes Regents where the 65% are higher. Students who are classified, have an IEP or 504 plan, they can get 55s on these exams and still meet graduation requirements. So in this, the way the state counts it, a student who gets a 55 with an IEP is a failing score toward a percentage. But that student can still graduate because he met their low-pass option on the IEP. So even though 85 pass, 85% passed geometry, maybe that number was actually higher when you go back and look at those numbers who got 55 or higher. That's not reflected in this data.
Okay, now here's our mastery rates. For the standard, regular, older tests, it's 85 and above, 85% above on a Regents test. And then Common Core, time to level five, the very highest level, is considered mastery. Again, we have a baseline in 2014, 15. Some of those are new tests, some are not. Or you have, in some cases, 0% mastery on some of those examinations. And then in 15, 16, we saw some, in some cases, huge jumps in mastery rate. So not just children passing, but children mastering the content. And I do have to say, and we can talk about this at the very end, and the things we think of influence this, there's been a concerted effort on the district level, on the building levels, to increase the rigor, all right, the complexity of the questioning in the classroom, checking for understanding, things of that nature that lends itself to increases in mastery. And again, in 16, 17, we kept the yellow going where we thought we were seeing net value and upward trend. And again, this year in 17, 18, that's where the rubber hits the road, so to speak, and we really wanna keep pushing to see if we get that continued upward trend. Okay, that's a little bit small, but you do have copies there. Some of the things we think have led to this, and things that we're doing to address where we think we have deficiencies long-term. And I wanna say, Mr. Gates was being very humble when he talked about literacy program in the middle school. We started that when I first got here two years ago, but Dr. Reed and I quickly got Andy on board, he was interning, and we were all involved in creating that, and Ms. Hoover as well, creating that literacy program in the middle school with the intention of it pushing up into the high school. So those Lexile reports that we get on those eighth graders have now been forwarded to the high school, all right? The teachers who teach freshman English and freshman classes get those, our data team will get them. We now have a license to administer SRI, dysphasic reading inventory, to our freshmen. That's gonna happen tomorrow and Thursday. So we'll have a whole grand-new set of scores, the data team to get their teeth into, and then we'll be meeting tomorrow, the data team during eighth period. That includes some grade-level teachers, content teachers, administrators, and counselors. Our hope eventually is to get licenses, potentially new grade, for 10th, 11th, and 12th grade. That includes some grade-level teachers, content teachers, administrators, and counselors. Our hope eventually is to get licenses, potentially from New Brain, for 10th, 11th, and 12th grade.
Wait for the grant to be approved.
Wait for the grant, yeah, fingers crossed. Those kids who we do red flag with Lexile, we're going to do something called the QRI, and Ms. Hoover can, or Dr. Eaton can talk about more than I can. But that's another level of prescriptive detailed analysis of what a kid's reading level is and what their needs are. Again, everybody was involved in a lot of these things that are going on. Principal, directors, high school, ELA staff. We've also begun revisions with our language labs, ELA labs, in the high school. They're taking the same kind of approach that we started in the middle school, more prescriptive, doing a base filter of SRIs, doing a more detailed analysis of what their skills are with the QRI. They're going to go back and look at kids' performances grade-wise, and looking at their historical data as far as 3 through 8 testing and reading. The recent purchase of the, for math software for Imagine Math, the training on that, that is 6 through 10, it goes all the way up to geometry. In fact, I just talked to Mr. Taylor Arnold today. He is using that in his math lab for geometry. There's also a teacher sitting in there, and kids have self-paced, self-taught, and they will receive something called the Quantile Level with Imagine Math, very similar to Lexile, where you can compare kids' ability levels in math, and you can track them from beginning of the year to the end. Training in differentiated instruction and lesson planning with focus on content vocabulary in all areas, including math and ELA. We're checking lesson plans, now we do that for two years, something that had not been known before, and discussing lesson plans with teachers and how to increase rigor. We'll be doing, again, QRI assessments on the students, targeting them based on their Lexiles. We have planned SAT prep sessions for the fall and the spring. We already have two teachers who have committed to doing that, both reading and math, a month before the big, the big administration of the SAT, which is in November, and I think in May. Those are the two big administrations of the SAT. We've also purchased some review books for them. Additionally, also got a whole webpage dedicated now on the web, the school webpage, for the resources, online resources for SAT and ACT. Want to just briefly?
Yeah, we have, we've probably had 20 different sites that we've reviewed regarding SAT, different SAT prep stuff. And I would say over half of them are free, that students can access at any time. So those links are up there, those links are going to be, Mr. LaPar's class has a, has TV screens around the building, have different announcements. Those will be posted on there as well, so students can access the free SAT prep stuff online at any time. So we're advertising those as well.
And I think the last thing, last things we'll talk about, and these are things that, sort of top-down, Mr. Cuff's been very supportive, especially to the part with social worker in the building, holding regular administrative hearings, slash meetings on student attendance. If they're not here, they're not going to get the content. We know a lot of them struggle because they're just not in the seat in the classroom. So we've made a concerted effort to intervene with those kids and those parents, and having a school social worker working with us in both buildings helps that process quite a bit.
And I think the other thing too that's helped is the district has committed to allowing us to do after-school Regents' review classes. So we do those in January, and June, and August as well, to help our kids not just take for the first time and do better. But we have a lot of students who will take the Algebra Regents again, 80, and say, I want to take it again and do better. And we're all for that, continue to keep trying, you know? So the review classes that are offered in those time periods after school has definitely been beneficial, and we're getting a lot of students that are retaking and trying to get higher scores.
And again, I guess to summarize, finish up, we have the distinct advantage in the high school, being able to sit down with a teacher and have a specific conversation with complete data, when you talk about year-to-year, what's happened with some of their assessments of the year, more so than what some of the other ones have. Questions?
I have one for the real question. For students that, with the free SAT prep. Now, if someone doesn't have internet service or the ability to do this at home, is there something or some place that they can do this, maybe during the study hall, after school?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And they can, they can access their phones. We do have a cell phone policy, electronics policy in the district, but of course, we tell the teachers, if you want students to take out that phone and use that as an instructional tool, they can, they can go ahead and do that. So-and-so, you can take your phone out and go ahead and get on their website, they can do the study halls. We have the Chromebooks, we have computers in the libraries, various computer labs. We have free Wi-Fi for the public on school grounds after school that's activated for kids that are staying after school for practice. Mr. Gates was kind enough to help us set up a after-school program for athletics, and now we let other clubs go in there, into the cafeteria before practice. If they have to wait, they can access all that, that stuff at the same time.
It's out there, they just got to take advantage of it, you know?
Right.
But there is a lot of tools nowadays out there that are free for SAT prep, whereas in the past, a lot of it was you'd have to pay $100 for your six-month subscription. Now a lot of people have kind of gone to free SAT prep. You still can, you still can do the ones where you pay a lot of money, but it's not necessary now because there is more out there.
Well, thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
There's a lot at one time. I apologize for the fluff information.
But it's a lot of good information, and we appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Additions to the agenda, accepting electricity supply agreement and bid award, and accepting the natural gas buying agreement and bid award.
All right, and those are non-consent items. So that would be item 9C and 9D.
Okay.
And Mr. Dale provided motion and information on the bill tonight. And we also have a consent agenda item, AI. We've received a resignation from a teacher. So that would be a consent agenda item, AI. And we pulled one item earlier from the agenda this afternoon, from a consent appointment at 8:00 AM, and it was for a substitute teacher and a substitute nurse, and we're hoping to bring that back next month.
All righty. Let's see here. So 9 will come later, and then the added consent agenda.
Right, we added AI to the consent agenda and removed an item for 8:00.
Okay, does anybody want to pull any items from the consent agenda? I have a couple of questions, they don't need to be removed, I just have a couple of questions on consent agenda items. The revenue and the budget status report, if we could get that by function code, we received the July one by function code, but then the, no, August one by function code, and then this month, we received it by ST3 code. If we could get them by function code, I think it'll give us a better understanding of each line item, especially when it comes down to the transfers. We'd understand that. And then the only other thing, the declared surplus items, will they be donated? What do we do with those declared surplus items? I know a lot of them are like kitchen items.
If they're of any value and we can sell them, we try to sell them.
Okay.
We auction them off, or we donate them at all.
Turn them some.
Okay. All right. Just seeing the other thing that I had. Okay, so, and just so the public knows, the consent agenda items are typically routine items that we get every single month, appointments, retirements in some cases, financial reports. So that's why they tend to be listed on the consent agenda. So do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda as amended?
Move it.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. So now we are up to...
Do we have to add 9C and 9D?
That would be added to the new business.
Yep. So...
So now we're on 9A.
9A, closed tax surcharge accounts. Did you want to elaborate on this just a little bit, or?
Sure, absolutely. So we've had two tax surcharge cases that we have intervened in within the last couple of years. The first was a city-federal credit union, which has now been resolved. We set up a tax surcharge reserve, so that if in fact we had any liability that came out of those actions, we'd have money to pay for them. We've now finished with the city-federal credit union, so I'm asking that we, we could close that tax surcharge reserve and bring that money back into the general fund. The other one is the Kraft case, and again, we resolved that at this point, and so we can now close out the tax surcharge reserve account, bring that money back in, and I think we had those things up, it comes to like $122,000 or so, to come back into the general fund. Will not show up in this year's fund balance, will show up in next year's, because of course, we're doing this in 17, 18, not 16, 17, so you'll see it in next year's fund balance. But it frees up some money for us.
Okay. And I missed last month, but was the Kraft repayment, has that been done, that's all settled out?
We have received the bill, and I don't think we've quite sent it out yet, but we just got it, a lot of it's going out.
Okay.
Wasn't a lot of money, but...
All right, so do we have any questions on closing that account and transfer?
Just one, that balance you said is going to go into the future projection for next year's balance?
Correct.
Okay, for next year's budget, is we're going to use that as revenue coming into that?
It actually, when you close out your accounts at the end of the year, it just gets added to the fund balance, which is separate from your, separate from your budget, but you can use that fund balance to fund your budget, it just won't show up until the end of 17, 18. So you won't see it during the budget, but we'll know it's there.
So it'll no longer be a restricted item, it'll be unrestricted fund balance total?
I guess I asked a question wrong. In the creation of next year's budget, we're going to be able to, that will be accounted for in the creation of next year's school budget?
It certainly can be, it will show up as the fund balance for the next year still. So you won't actually see it when we look at the fund balance, but we'll all know it's there, so we can talk about it as if it is there, it just won't show up until 17, 18. Does that help you? I'm sorry, I hope I don't, doesn't confuse you too much.
Well, no, it's there, but we can't see it's there, that's, that's the only part that confused me. Okay, so, just so we're clear, that balance, we're going to, we now are transferring that into the general fund now.
Correct.
So we have that on hand.
Right.
When we re-categorize for next year's budget, that's going to be in the fund balance for next year's budget?
It does not technically become part of the fund balance until July 1st of 2018.
Okay.
So it would not show up when we go through our fund balance projection. It will show up when you actually get the fund balance. So, but we can, again, we know it's there, we know it's going to be added, so we can effectively say to ourselves it's there, it's just technically it won't show up.
It's not going to show up on the, when we're creating the budget?
Sorry.
Sorry, life group?
Okay, so, do we have a motion to close the tax surcharge accounts and to return them to the unrestricted fund balance?
I make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Kevin, Kevin, yep. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right. Does my accept donations? Here they are. Okay. We have a few donations, or donated items that have been awarded to the school. The first one is a $50 from Undercover Eggplant Company in memory of Larry Regus for a scholarship to be established. 24 journals from Atco Brands Corporation to Mrs. Bowers' second-grade classroom, and then $650 from Action for Healthy Kids Grant to the Dr. George F. Mack Middle School. So do we have a motion to accept the donations?
I'll move it.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Thank you, Larry. So now back up to the 9.
Okay, so the items that have been added.
Mr. Dale brought this in.
All right. So we have a resolution. Do you want me to read these, or will that be clearer, or everybody has this in front of them?
I will.
Okay, the first resolution is to accept the electricity supply agreement bid award, and it looks like that is being awarded to Direct Energy Services.
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a motion to accept that bid award?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. And the same with the, except natural gas. Natural gas was awarded to District Energy Services as well.
Correct. Direct energy.
Or, I'm sorry, what did I just say?
District.
District, sorry, Direct Energy Services. Do we have a motion to accept that as submitted?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carried. And I believe that was all of new business, correct?
Right, yeah, there was one whole business.
Okay. Yes. The appointments of officers, we need to rescind the appointment of Adam Hoover as the Test Coordinator, made in air in July 11, 2017. And in that place, and change in title, also in the stipend for the Test Coordinator to APPR 3012D Test Coordinator. And that will go to Michelle Reed. So do we have a motion to make, to rescind that? Okay. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And one other thing that I wanted to add to old business, our training topics, were you going to touch on this, or am I jumping the gun?
No.
Okay. For our NISBA training, we had three topics, and I just wanted to clarify them. Fiscal oversight, trust and teamwork, and community relations. Does that all sound correct? Okay. Because I know when she was reading that back, I'm like, was that it? So, and that will be October, we'll try to shoot for early October, and if we can't get in early October, it'll be early November. So I guess we'd need to start checking our calendars again for that. And I believe we are up to administrative remarks.
Okay, I just, so the boards are aware, we will be doing the president and vice president training next Thursday. Rhonda and Kevin will be here with Darcy from NISBA, that starts at 4:30, so looking forward to that, to continue some of the conversations that we have. I want to remind everyone that the homecoming parade is next Saturday. If you plan on marching, usually to the new board members, we have board members that do march, please be at the bus garage at 8:15, and then we'll just march to the high school. And I'll send some more information out on that. And I think I also sent Mr. Knutski's newsletter about the homecoming to everybody, so you have that. But if you have any questions, let me know. I also want for the board to know, we had some very successful open houses. We tried the open house here at the last week of August with the middle school and high school. It was Mr. Knutski's idea, which was very successful. We had, I believe, over 200 at the high school and just about 200 at the middle school, so, and we're getting some very positive feedback from the staff that they enjoyed it, so it was a good turnout. We also had the hot dogs and the beans that they also serve, I don't know how they did on their dinner.
70.
So we had a lot, you know, it was something that we tried different, and I think it was very successful, since we can't do the evening ones anymore due to the new SED laws with the calendar, so we were pleased to do that. We're also trying to start an after-school snacks, and Mr. Gates is talking with Mrs. Corcoran. So our athletes that are here after school, they'll be able to actually get a lunch, or if they have a game, they can actually bring a bag of lunch with them on the bus, so working on doing that with Mrs. Corcoran. And the last thing is our B, our board docs, there'll be an update, and I'll send you some more information on that in the Friday letter, so you can take a look at that. That's it.
And school business administrator report, remarks?
Sure, I just have a few things I want to update you on. We've been having some issues with the control system for our environmental system, within the controls on our heating and our air conditioning. It has been going on and off, and on and off, and on and off, and it's a lot of work to try and track down what's wrong with it. We think that it centers around some wiring that goes the length of the building that we're going to get a quote on replacing, and hopefully that will solve our problem because we're, again, having problems with the system intermittently not working. So that's one issue we're dealing with. School has opened, they went well with our transportation, with our cafeteria. Our audit is finished, we're waiting for a draft. As we spoke about, we have settled the tax surcharge issues with Kraft, which is good news. The other thing that we've been working on for several years really is a resolution to our health consortium. As you know, we set aside $810,000 over the last couple of years to pay for the remaining costs of our old high consortium, in other words, the expenditures that they expended on our behalf as we were walking out the door, because we're no longer with that consortium. I got a final bill after an awful lot of conversations with them, of about $650,000. They committed it to being a final bill, as you recall, there's an issue whether it would be a final bill or not. And they agreed that it was due as of June 30th of last year, so that will, they will pay that, that extra $160,000, and in fact, go into our fund balance for 17, 18, so we're going to have an additional $160,000 of our fund. I will get you an update of where, I think, our fund balance stands right now in the next day or two, so you've got an idea of what we're looking at. But that's good news that A, we've resolved that, B, we've got some extra money in our fund balance.
All right, thank you. Anybody have any questions? Director of Curriculum, Richie got there.
Yeah. I apologize up front for my voice. So again, I'm still convinced it was probably the open house at Townsend, Norfolk, when I was over there, I've been feeling sick ever since then, but it was a great open house, though. I would attest to that. I have a few items on opening day. Board there, it was nice to see you there for opening day presentations. Working with our technology department, we've come up together to work on, let's say, little technology handbook for teachers and staff, I did write a copy for all of you to see, to help teachers chump- I did write a copy for all of you to see, so we help teachers troubleshoot simple computer issues. They need to talk about certification and things, my learning plan, and they know direct questions to me or to our director of technology, Mr. Robinson, who's been really helpful in doing this for the district. So I did present, I'm going to give you a copy of those that we distributed to staff as well, and appreciate Rick and the NIS team as well for helping us to get this together for opening day. I think I have a couple extra as well. Thank you. So we did have some really great opening day PD presentations from Ms. Hoover, who helped do one on RTI. Mr. Armi Ardi Rumus, who did one on wellness and kind of brain breaks in classroom, it was a really popular one. We also had Laura Morris, who came to talk about classroom, positive behaviors in classroom, and myself and Ms. Conklin talked about engaging students with technology informative assessments. And we also showed Google Expedition, I can take virtual field trips in their classrooms with students to see other countries, and even with other schools, to kind of give them a little taste of some things that we're going to be offering for them here. So those are very successful. And that information, I did a survey, and teachers let us know what they had in mind for future PDs. So we're using that information to provide more training throughout the years that they can follow up. And a lot of these things were also part of our district goals from K all the way to 12 with improving RTI processes, so that people understand what that is, and just making sure that we're on the same page to meet some of those focus questions that I'm going to be talking about now. So first of all, on Tuesday of next week, I'm really excited to go back to Albany again. Okay, it's a little sarcastic, I'm sorry. But I will be going back up for this year's focus kickoff. It's mandated, schools that are focused, identified, that district prep is going to be going up there to talk with them. And I actually want to go, because I want to ask some information. Some of the questions is, when are we going to start to see, when can we remove from the focus list? At least the high school, because they are taking the tests, our graduation rates are improving. Once you're identified, you're identified for two years regardless, so this is the second year for us. So I want to know, is it looking like we're going to be coming off, at least for the high school? Unfortunately, as Dylan presented earlier, the test refusals, they use that data to designate us as focus. And I did print off for you frequently asked questions, I stated today, Erica Meeker, who's the one who put together, is frequently asked questions, how do they come up with a performance index number for school districts? What data do they base that on? This, I asked her, I said, "Do you have something from this year?" This is from '15, '16. She goes, "That's the most recent one we have, and we're still using that data." I know, but we turned in something to you personally.
Right.
But I did want to provide a printout copies for you in these. I can also send you the web links as well, that kind of breaks down and explains what focus is, how districts are identified, how long it takes to get off those identifications, and what you have to do. And again, that performance index, they take an average of the scores from three to eight ELA math tests, and if you're in the bottom 5%, well, you were, because of the refusals and how few took the test, and like you said, if you had a person taking day one, level one. So that immediately throws them in that lower percentage area. They did tell me that starting in 2018, they're going to change the name from focus to some other names, it's really focus, but it's going to be something else. But on Tuesday, when I get that information, I'll report back out and let you know exactly what's going on with that. And finally, I did turn in the application for the focus grant, because it does help us fund the SRIs and all these other things that we're trying to do here, especially professional development, so I can continue to offer summer workshops and PD, so it doesn't cost the district money. I'll be finding out within the next two weeks, really two and a half weeks at this point, whether or not the grant application will be accepted, but I'll see them in person on Tuesday, so I'll be saying, "You're going to let us know when that's going to happen?" But one more document for you, and again, you've had a lot of info tonight.
Thank you.
I think it's enough on my end, except to say that we're going to continue to report out on focus, so it's very clear. And again, we can put this link on the website, because it links to information that if the public's interested in knowing more about focus, they do provide a lot of information.
And I know that, I had an email, and we've talked about focus quite a bit, and I asked Dr. Reed today when we talked, to put something together, which she did, but I would, you know, people are asking in the community about focus. This is really down and dirty, because you have facts, so you can at least talk about it. And there is, you know, if there is specific information, please don't hesitate to contact me on it. But this will get you started again.
Yeah, I appreciate the cover. I'm glad he brought that to me, the information. And also, in there, you'll see there's also a priority. We're not there. Priority is like state taken. I mean, if this, we're not there, we're in the middle there. Townsend still says do the standing for now, but the refusals, they said, "One more year," when I was talking to them, if they had continued, if they continued that identification, they may have been the next target, is what I was told personally when I was there last. But again, just, we are not the priority status. We're focused with just little at their level.
And can you elaborate just a little bit? If we do, you know, hopefully we never come to that, but what happens when it becomes a priority?
These are usually like the big, big urban schools, like Rochester, and there's some schools.
The big five.
Big five. They have huge populations of ELL as well. Our poverty rate is 62.5%. I mean, there's, I'm talking like 70, 80% with that, and they are taking the test, it's just their performance is, it's just, yeah, a different scenario.
And what happens is the state ed comes in, usually it's a district superintendent, and they come in and they evaluate the school, and then they make recommendations and things like that, but I don't think...
And things are out of our control, then?
Yes.
It's whatever they just have.
It's up to state ed, state ed takes it over.
Whenever, they, it's a punishment for not having, I'll take the test, I don't know what else to do in that regard, and to have parent education or whatever, but it's simply what it is.
And I'm assuming at that point, when the state, if a state were to take over a district, we talk about unfunded mandates all the time. It doesn't matter what they say we have to do, that has to be done, and it's up to us to find the money to establish that, so...
And I understand your frustration that you're talking about, that it's frustrating for us as well, we know we're doing all these things. It's just, we know we have capability here for potential progress, it's just not satisfying the criteria of a state assessment.
Well, I appreciate all the work that you have done on this. I know by hearing the presentation here tonight, it clarified a lot of things for me, especially when a student does take, you know, one day test and not the rest, how that impacts our scores. It's huge. It's huge. And not be able to really take that to previous years. I appreciate it. Thank you. I know it wasn't easy. You probably were getting, you know, emails like, "No, no, this is what I want." "No, I'm still not understanding this." I apologize, but I appreciate what you've come up with. All right, so we are, oh, before we close out, I asked Cory if she could make a copy of this for everybody. Not that we have to discuss this tonight instead of suspension. I provided this a while ago, but I know some of yous never received a copy, so if you have time, review it, and maybe at some point, we can bring it back up as an agenda item. And then also, the essential evaluation guide, and the DCMO, BOSI's component directory is in there, and the onboard. Are these extras? I usually receive this at home, but I didn't get one.
Yeah, it came here for some reason.
Oh, it did, yeah.
Yeah, we'll see if it keeps coming.
Okay.
Then we'll change.
Maybe they decide just to mail it to one location, but all right. Okay, so we have a need for executive session.